All the meeting over. Glad to see everybody here. Nice faces. Alicia, if you don't mind, leave us an opening prayer, please.
Who?
Felicia.
Felicia.
Jesus Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for life given. We thank you for your grace and your mercy. We thank you for the sunshine and the rain that you provide us with. Father, we ask you to just have me waiting this meeting tonight. We ask you to just look upon everyone that's here. Father, we ask you to just help us do what's right, Father. Not what we want to do, but do what's right in the sight of other people. And we ask you, Father, in this I pray, amen.
Amen. Please believe it's the United States of America. At two hundred and forty-five, for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with every being and every being. Alicia. Okay. I need a, um... Is there any discussion on the minutes for our last meeting?
Yeah, make a motion accept.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the minute for the last meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye. All right. Uh... You got financials, uh, Debbie got those done? Uh, and I think she emailed them to you?
Yes.
So, um, our tax coming up, so you should have those in your questions. Debbie.
I do have one comment. I'm wondering why nobody, why you didn't ask me what difference was in the balances on the general fund? And did you know?
Yeah.
I haven't seen.
It's a, we got a thirty-six thousand dollar check from the Insurance and Safety Fire Commissioner Tax Distribution like we get every year.
Good deal. Good deal.
So that balance...
It's not reflected on here.
It's not on there yet. No, because that's from September thirtieth.
Yeah, but everywhere I was...
Go ahead.
Whenever I was looking at them, I wondered if that would come in.
Yeah.
If I noticed it.
It, it's into that.
Great.
Yes.
Good deal.
At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to our attorney. Attorney's update.
First on the agenda was the squash reimbursement. Nothing has changed since last week when we had a discussion on that. I think we had talked about giving the county a little time to evaluate the reimbursement request on that. And we're not just sitting and wait on that unless y'all tell me differently.
Is there any way that you can, um, go to the next commissioners' meeting and get a vote of all the commissioners? And find out if they will go ahead and issue that check?
I don't know if I can force them to make a vote.
Can you request?
I think the city could if you wanted.
We already have.
They're not, I don't have the ability to give you an answer right now, but if you want to make the request, we'll see how it goes.
I'm just saying if we can, you know, maybe if you can make the time to go down there at that, you know, during the next one and request that, um...
When can they be?
The, I think it's, uh, Marshall, when do you meet?
Twenty-third.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Tuesday.
Next Tuesday? What time?
Six.
Make sure you make six call.
Come check. I'm free next Tuesday if the council would like me to go down there. I don't know what good I can do, but I can try to do whatever I tell them to do.
Well, if you can just, maybe just see where everybody stands when we can get this check back to us before then, you know, this month, that'd be great.
Y'all, I mean, is that a motion to do that or to directly to do?
Is there a way to have each council person?
Okay.
I wouldn't show up and up and make a form if a couple of y'all want to go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have you sent him a letter?
Yeah.
You've ever sent a letter?
Right, and I never actually got one once, but...
Send him another. That'd be my, what I've been.
Uh, well, he pretty much sent his letter and...
Y'all, y'all tell me what to do. A letter or a personal visit or what?
I say a personal visit.
A letter is a big cheat. A strong letter would be cheating.
Um...
Debbie.
I know that I was thinking, I know that I was supposed to follow up with Carol and I have not done that. So, I will call him and get what his opinion is and if there, I do need to do any more paperwork. I forgot to do that and been very busy. So, that's another thing that I can do that and then I will give you the response. I can email you all the response from what he says if that'll...
I, I would like to make a motion that Doug go down and...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion.
I would like to make the motion for Doug to be there next Tuesday.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor for Doug to be at the camp, uh, county meeting next Tuesday. Go ahead, second.
Well, I, I want to discuss it. I can say, I'm sort of, I'm going to second it so we can discuss it.
Okay, discussing.
Um... Why don't, go ahead. Why don't we wait till Debbie talk to Carol first and see what happens?
And then get more information on it?
Right.
Then come back?
Right.
That's what I was told to do last week and I, sorry, I forgot.
I bet we need to wait till Debbie do her job.
I mean, my personal opinion is nothing against you, Mr. Lawyer, is you do get paid to do that kind of stuff. And I think we need to try a couple more things next month so we don't spend the money.
So...
Y'all know I watch this money like it's mine. I just think we need to try another avenue and then if that don't work, then yeah, send it now.
Okay, well, wait till Debbie do, yeah, and then we'll, yeah.
Not against you, Kelly, but I'm just thinking we need to try another motion before we do it. Now, that's just me.
Do that need to be in the motion?
Well, we still have a motion on the floor, so...
Yeah, you still have the original motion on the floor, so I guess it's something we'll call a vote on hand.
So, I mean, you, we can, you can vote against it, you know?
Well, we don't really know. We have only gotten Carol and I guess the chairman's.
Well, Joey Dorsey is the chairman.
I know. So, have we gotten everyone else's, all the rest of the commissioners', um, voice in this?
No.
It's a big question.
I have, I mean, I'm not allowed to speak to commissioners individually because they're represented by an attorney, so...
I don't think it's, it's worth a try to see what every, every commissioner thinks. Be present down there, just my thought.
Is that a possibility to just, uh, at the, the meeting to request an individual vote? Or you can call it a vote?
You can. I mean, it'd be like somebody showing up at our meeting and telling y'all, asking y'all opinion on something. You don't want to give it, you don't have to give it. I don't know how much efficacy it would have to show up and put the wrong spot or something.
It's not about a vote, it's just asking what, you know, you can go down and ask everyone if it's okay to go ahead and get the check to us.
I don't think I seem to do it. Um, I can't talk to them individually because they have their own attorneys. Like, I wouldn't let their attorney come in and talk to me, y'all. It may be something, I mean, if y'all want to find out, I mean, y'all have a relationship with the chairman and, uh, the other commissioners, y'all can talk to them individually if you want to. Or one of the, one of the mayor to do with them, I mean, but, um... Sometimes it's not always good to have the attorney do it, if you know what I mean? It makes it more of an adversarial thing, rather.
I think you just need to wait till Debbie talks to Carol and...
I agree. And then, so we're close enough.
We need to vote on that motion.
Uh, hold on, hold on, hold on.
We're still in discussion, I think.
If, um, if we don't have a, if we're going to just send a letter, um, can we bring this up next month so you can appear in November at Tuesdays?
Y'all want to?
We don't get it by then?
If that's what y'all vote to do.
Can we vote on that?
Uh, I think you've got your original proposal on the table, so y'all vote on that and then just send me down there.
Oh, in November?
No, you said send it down at the next meeting, don't you say?
No, not in the next meeting.
That's what y'all made motion. Your motion is twenty-second.
Okay.
That's what's on the table.
On the table right now.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, just hear that motion first. So, I got, are we done with discussion? Any more discussion? I already got a motion to, uh...
We can see history here.
For Doug to go down to a meeting.
Yes, just...
That's the motion, is that Doug would go to the next, that's the motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have first and second if for Doug to go...
But now...
To the county meeting.
But we all voted whether correct, Doug, we all voted yea or nay, correct?
Right.
Yes.
Any of us tied, Jim breaks it, the first time in history by our, we'll be up top.
We all have it too. It's first and the second, doesn't matter.
Yeah, right.
Okay, I got a first and a second. All in favor?
All opposed.
So, that note, that's motion is voted down.
Okay, that motion voted down.
But I need to do the count, right? All right, I need to know who was against.
Against Doug going down?
Yes. Felicia and, thank you. And Cindy?
Felicia and Cindy.
Kelly?
What I was going to say is if we don't do it this month, that's what I was trying to say.
No, 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 what, you voted yes?
I voted.
Yes, she did for the first.
Thank you.
All right, so that was voted down. Did y'all have any other suggestions?
I do.
Okay.
If we send a letter out Monday, giving them so many days, ten days, is that what you had in your last letter?
I believe so.
And if we don't get it, then maybe you can go down in November? Would that be fair?
Yeah, I'll do what you tell me to do.
I don't know.
I still think Debbie should talk to Carol first.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of information that we don't have yet.
What information do we not have?
I don't know, Debbie and Carol could get this together.
Yeah.
Debbie, what information do you not have?
I think it's information that they don't have.
He, he, yeah. He had written me and asked me for some more...
Invoices.
Yeah, invoices and other things. And I sent him what I had and then I hadn't heard a response back yet from him. So, I have to call him and ask him if there was, because I think the Mr. Kidd had said that...
I think there's...
He had said that there was something else that they needed, which I didn't know that. And then I was supposed to do that last week and I apologize, just been buried behind. Um, but I will reach out to him next week and then I will let you all know by email what he says and then we can go from there. If that's what you want me to do.
Yes, can you forward us the email once you receive that?
I sure will and I will forward you what I send to him.
Okay, any more discussion on squash?
I don't know. Okay. Go ahead. Okay, moving on to the next thing on the agenda is the downtown development authority. I think, uh, as of last week, we had discussed that. Don't know if y'all moved forward there or not.
Um, I've...
Go ahead.
Personally given it a lot of thought. Done some more digging, um, talked with some people at, um, GMA, which is the Georgia Municipal Association and, um, GMRC. Just wanting to make a wise decision, you know? Um, not a knee decision, not a you decision, not a divided decision. You know, I'm beyond all that, you know? I, I'm like, I want to do what's best for fire control. And that's where I'm at. And, um, the main, um, concern is that fire control continue to exist and that we be able to, um... Not only reserve what we have, but improve what we have. And I was very disappointed in the last time I, we brought the plans for everything. We asked people to sign up on what would you like to be on a committee or volunteer to help with? And three people signed up. I was really disappointed. And that's the reason why we even started considering the DDA. Because when people have official, um, jobs, it seems like things get done better. There's some things that the town cannot do. Okay, and I'm not going to go into that. I've heard a lot of different things about the DDA. I think some people are just scared of the unknown, thinking that we have a hidden agenda. At least for me, I don't have a hidden agenda, except to see that fires can get improved. So...
Yeah. I, my wife has really been digging into it and I'm not against it. I think something needs to be done, but I have not done my due diligence to, to, to homework to, on it right now. But I promise by the time we have the next meeting, I'll have my due diligence to myself and know what I, what we need, what I think we need today. I've got some ideas, but I'm just not ready to go forward.
Well, actually, I think now, this is just my opinion, but I think it needs to be tabled until the first of year and the new government people can come in, whoever they are. And then they can, uh, make their decisions on that.
Yeah. Everybody knows I'm a Republican, I've been one my whole life. And it brought me here the other day that I was against Garland, Obama's, um, pick for the Supreme Court. And they did wait till the next president went in before they picked. But like I said, I just have not done my due diligence and I'll wait a long time, like, at least next month. That's just me.
Okay. Yep, for Daniel, any more on the DDA?
Are y'all voting, I guess, tabled until next?
Tabled to next month, that's what I'm saying.
Is that a motion?
Is that a motion to do that?
I'll say I'll make a motion.
Do we have a motion tabled for next month? Do I have a second? No second? Okay, I guess the motion dies. Do we have a motion for anything on the DDA?
I'm making a motion that we go ahead with it tonight.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to go, go ahead and with the DDA tonight.
I don't, I don't understand the motion, I'm sorry. To go ahead with what? To, to vote on whether you're going ahead with it or to...
Vote to go ahead with it.
More discussion on it or, I don't understand.
No, no, no more discussion, go ahead with it.
So, you want the DDA?
My understanding would be you would need to select the members of the DDA and they would have to be known. Those names would be included in that resolution that I had drafted two or three months back. Those names would be included on that resolution and then you would vote on the resolution, uh, at the next meeting or whatever. But I think the first that you would have to select would be on the back. So, that would be included on the resolution.
Debbie.
Is that what the executive session is for?
If you so chose, I would discuss that where I believe you would go into executive session to select these members because they're considered public officials. And you're appointing them to that board, um, so, yeah, you would do that if you opted to tonight, if you wanted to or if you want to next month.
But that would be at the end of the meeting. I mean, we'd have to adjourn and go into executive session.
She's got a motion, I think, on the second.
Um, well...
Didn't she make a motion to go ahead with the DDA?
But you're saying that we can't do that.
Depends on what her motion was for. Can you clarify?
The motion was for us to go ahead and approve moving forward with the DDA tonight.
Okay. My understanding would be to move forward would mean to select the people who are going to be on it. Once they're known, include their names on that resolution and then voting for the resolution is what implements the DDA.
I thought you had to activate it first and then you select.
That's for people motion.
The activation, the resolution, the list of the members, so the members have to be known before you vote on that resolution. Because the resolution lists the members.
Hold on.
So, Felicia, your, your motion is to go ahead with the resolution.
I think this motion is good.
Are you withdrawing your motion?
I feel like it's...
Go ahead.
Well, from what you're saying, I need to withdraw my motion.
All right, I guess you don't have a second, so I guess it's just, y'all...
Hold on, hold on. What is there to second? You're saying that we can't do anything tonight?
Well, what he's saying is...
I think...
What he's saying is, is you can go in executive session, you can pick out the members that you want on the DDA. Then, once you do that, then he puts it on the next thing. Again, if y'all come next month...
Right.
Y'all come up with a motion to, to pass forward and if it passes, then it passes. But you got to put the members on there before you do anything.
I understand that, I understand that, so there doesn't need to be a motion for anything to start this day.
You do pick out who you want on there and then make a motion. Now, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just saying I'm just another month to think about it and to do my, my own. I don't talk to a couple of small towns, I would have talked to a few more. I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm just not for it right now. I vote for it, yes, but I ain't done my, I mean, that's just picking a vote.
Okay, so, moving on.
Moving on to the seat.
I guess the motion has been withdrawn.
It's a...
All right, next on the agenda is the agenda policy. I think we had discussed last week, just to let that go and let the new administration adopt whatever it wants to do. Um, I guess just to have a formal vote on that, y'all just agree to take that back now?
Go ahead, a motion to table that, we have a beginning of the year motion. Okay, we got a motion for beginning of the year, here a second. Okay, we got a second. All in favor, aye, aye.
All right, next up is the, uh, business licenses. Um, I think we discussed this a couple of months ago. What's the issue now, why is it on the agenda?
For me, because I'm doing business license applications and at one point, when we first started doing this, I remember that, um... Someone wanted to get a business license, they were consultant. Um, we discussed it and also another person has a home-based business. We discussed it, we didn't do anything with it. It just kind of died and we decided that we weren't going to make them get a business license. Well, then somebody put in a business license and then withdrew the business license and I'm doing applications right now. According to our lawyer, anybody that's got a business, whether it's home-based or not, has to fill out an, a business application. But I want counsel and mayor and lawyer and me to all be on the same page. I need to know what I'm doing. That's why the business licenses are on there. So... Am we doing home-based businesses, are we not? Are we...
Define home-based business.
A consultant, I guess.
A home-based business would be someone who either has a, a business that is a sole proprietorship or they've incorporated or have an LLC that they have from home. What it does not include is somebody that had, works for a company and they just have an office out of their house and they're doing business for that company. That's not a home-based business and they might have a license. This would just be people who are consultants or, I mean, or not a lawyer, if I had it out of my house, that would be a home-based business, people like that.
What about Jill?
What is Jill doing?
She's a, um...
Daycare.
Daycare.
Daycare son.
Daycare.
That was one of the ones that was brought up and then they said no and then they said yes.
I'm assuming she's paying taxes on those incomes she's giving, it's a business.
Okay. Just need to know who to do and who not to do. So, that would be a yes. Yes? People have to tell me something.
I look at, like, if you're making money, you get a siblings and you're making money and you get a check from somebody, that's a business. And that is for, I mean, I don't like paying taxes and my license don't owe anybody a thing, but if you're making money, you don't have, it, and not only does, it's not just, just for the city, it also protects them.
Well, I have to report it to the, the government. Whoever buys the business license is the law and I have to report them.
And I'm sure if they're making money, they're paying taxes.
It's for a, it's not for taxes, it's for, um, what is it? The, to prove you're not an alien.
E-verify.
E-verify. And I have to do that, it's the law. So, if you're, if it's under ten people, you don't have to get, you don't have to e-verify, but I have to prove to the government that... That everybody's legal and following the law. That's why you need to know all of that good stuff. That's why you have to do the business licenses.
Make it, make the money.
So, any, everybody?
I don't feel qualified to make that judgment.
Well, if I understand correctly, a home-based business is a business that the homeowner owns themselves.
Like an LLC incorporated, if you get it and you pay taxes on it and put it on your taxes, yes.
Now, other than that, I mean, somebody could have a business at home and not advertise and report it, you know?
Well, then we won't know, will we?
You won't know.
So, just do the ones that you know and...
If somebody comes up and wants to buy a business license, let them have one.
Okay.
I mean, you know?
Well, you can't bill some people and not the other people, but if you know about the business, we really should do it legally and everybody needs to do the business license.
Well, I've been trying to get a definition for a home-based business for the whole time and I've been making fun of it, so, um...
Why don't we see what the county does?
This isn't difficult, I have...
No, it's not.
If you know the business, then if they challenge it, then come up here and tell us why they're not on a home-based business or they're not...
Thank you.
But they don't follow the laws.
I just wanted everybody on the same page.
All right, I don't have anything.
Thank you, Doug. All right, committee updates.
Um, car shows, still getting a lot, I got to get them, you sent that committee. Uh, I'm bad, where did you get me that? Which part was, huh? All right, I didn't, I programmed it by twice, I didn't send the ball. Um, we still continuously getting, uh, getting donations and stuff in, um... Uh, meet, uh, vault, uh, somebody who knows somebody, I have a PA system, um...
We did?
We did.
You didn't?
Okay, but, no, we don't, we haven't got that yet, so... Um, but getting a lot of, getting a lot of, uh, feedback on it, uh, I think it's going to go really, really well.
Do you have any volunteers to help you?
I've got, I think, three, three or four.
I'll be there.
And I think your cousin said he's going to cook.
And I'm going to... I'm going to talk him into that.
Okay.
We'll get out... We'll get, I'll have you to cook.
All right, I've got, I've got four judges, all of them are, uh, all of them knows what they're doing, they're going to do it just for hot dogs. And, um, so it, it's looking good, you don't ever know the day of it, but it's looking good, I think it's going to be great.
How many volunteers do you think you need?
I need, um, the biggest thing I guess we need would be is I could, I thought what we would do is go around the outskirts all the way around. You're not going to be able to get a whole lot of them in the middle, we're still going to do, um. I, I need, really just need some help maybe taking up the, the, doing the entry fees or HPs and, and getting the stuff wrote up and, the stuff then put in the windows, because that's how you judge them, um.
Parking.
And parking, I, maybe one more, I'll do some of parking and, and help to do that, if maybe one more, um, little car people. Uh, they, they, you know, we all stick together, we all help one another, they'll, they'll, they'll be plenty, I think it'd be the volunteers leaving the car people. Uh, most time they'll jump in and do what they gotta do, but any volunteers, the more volunteers the better, I've, ever thing that we've had in buyers, we've got a lot. Just about, I don't think anything we had a lot. So hopefully this right here will be a, a good moneymaker and hopefully it'll be something we can do it every year.
I made up, I think, yeah, I made those up today.
I'm going to have my cars up here, but I'll be in in a minute, that's perfect.
Is it, okay, and then there was another form that, but I didn't know if you wanted all those, but I've got it saved on the computer, so you can tell me if you want any changes to that. And, um, I will get those printed up for you.
Where did you find this, you ain't been around car people?
It was online, because I couldn't use the one Felicia sent me, so I looked online, found that one.
That's perfect, absolutely perfect.
That was Felicia.
Man, Felicia, thank you, that's perfect. Um, so that, that being said, I'm really looking forward to it, I think it's going to be a good show. Um, I'm excited, it seems like everybody's excited, I'm, I'm real, just overwhelmed at all the, the businesses that are, and they get bombarded every, every week and stuff. But one of the things that I thought I would do is, is I'm going to do a banner, uh, with all the ones that have donated and have it up where they can see it and then, uh, mount here to show that, you know, like, um, Carquest, um, Autozone, um, they've had some really nice gifts, uh, give to us, uh, old, pre-old changes, just all kind of things. So I'm really looking forward, I think it's going to be great, we might, we'll do a fifty-fifty raffle and, um, I ain't much on, I don't know if that's gambling or not, I ain't much on gambling, but, um, and also we'll do, uh, on some of the prizes, we'll sell tickets and, uh, we'll, you know, if they pay so much for tickets and then we'll draw winners on it through some of the prizes.
I had a gentleman come in and, um, told me that there is a webs, I mean, a Facebook page for just car shows around here.
I already, yeah, I already got it.
Okay.
Already got it, um, I've passed out flyers and groceries, I think it's going to really go good, it really disappoints me if it does, I think it's going to go great. Um, on the, well, that's all I've got to do, that one, on the cemetery update, we're about done with the signs, so hopefully I'll have them up this week, or about this week to next week. Uh, I need to bring up one more thing here too, we need to have our meeting, November meeting. If there's any way possible, maybe the first week and the second week, because the third week I might have totally need replacement and I'm not going to be driving or anything for weeks. So y'all want to have a meeting, is there any way we can do it the first?
Are you talking about rescheduling?
I mean, in other words, still having the, the, the day of our, a day of our, our meeting here is the day that I'm coming out of hospital.
Yeah, but you're going to be laid up for months, right?
Weeks, yeah, they say it's six weeks. So I'm not going to be, I can't drive or anything else, I'm.
You're talking about the first meeting or the second?
I'm talking about the work session, do it the first week of, of November and then have our meeting the second week of November. That way I'm here, because the third week I'm not going to be here and I don't know if I'll be here in December.
All right, we can do that.
I know what I'm going to do.
You're going to have to vote on that, because the agenda, I gotta send it to everybody and.
Well, since it's me, y'all might want to make a motion.
And I gotta run a notice in the paper, unless you want to just do it with a quorum without him. But I have to run it in the paper, get it advertised.
I mean, if y'all okay with it, if y'all can do it.
I, I want to make a motion to change the.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, we change the meeting from the first and the second to.
The second, third and the first, the second.
Right. Okay, go ahead, a second. Any discussion? Uh, all in favor, aye? Okay.
I did vote on that.
What?
I did vote on because of my voting.
Okay. I know how far in advance, doesn't have to be thirty.
I'll be glad to reimburse the town for the amount of land if I need to.
Okay. And I'll, I'll notify the newspaper.
Mr. Paper, we're going to be changing the meeting dates.
I appreciate y'all doing that, thank you.
Do we need to give any further notice?
Do we have to send a public notice, I think, in the paper?
Thank you.
And the radio, and the radio.
Well, the, the papers almost want to.
Yeah, we're required to.
Yeah, we're required to.
Yeah, I know, but.
But we can, we can put it on the radio.
The radio has made it known, they want to know.
That's good. All right.
And Facebooking.
Uh, Jeff, uh, you got anything else on your, uh, cemetery?
Uh, no, we have signs, uh, it's the only thing I know of.
Okay.
One week.
One week, okay.
Okay, moving on to all business, um. For the cameras in the park, we, uh, talked about tabling yet until.
We have another committee for some.
Oh, it's.
Really? Okay, go ahead.
All right, the tailgate and chili cook-off, it is the second of November, I need an okay from the council to purchase a twenty-five dollar gift card for the winner of the chili cook-off. Also, for that, I will be up here next week to check on the TVs to make sure that we can stream the games, I've been looking at that and I'm pretty sure I know how to do it now. But we will have a fifty-fifty raffle, T-shirt sales and sell hot dogs. There will be a three-dollar taste test for anybody that wants to go down the line and taste the chilies, they'll get a small sample. It's a ten-dollar entry fee, Debbie will have the sign-up sheets at the town hall and where they can sign up the date of. I would like to see if the council wants to be judges and it will be a blind judge, you will not know whose chili you're tasting until the very end. And they will, we will have a cornhole tournament at the halftime part of the game with a five-dollar entry fee and winner gets half the pot.
I've also ordered your trophy.
And, yeah, and first place will also have a small trophy that says, hey, I was one of Iowa's first chili cook-off. And I spoke with Jill and she's not going to be in town for me to be able to go to Sam's Club with her, so I'm just going to have to go to Walmart.
Um. Oh, sorry. Um, when Jill did the, uh, the card for Sam's, I was always going to go up and get the, the, um, the second one. I think you can get two people on the same card, so I would ask council, because I'm, I just did it so we'd have two people that could be able to go to Sam's, so Jill's already had her picture taken and all that stuff, so I, I guess just, you know, until it runs out and we have to renew the thing, then go ahead and let, um, excuse me, Felicia and Alicia. Alicia, go ahead and take that second spot, get her picture done and then we get it all tax-free, if that's okay with council.
Bronca, Bronca bought enough hot dogs to do a car show in there.
That's what I told her.
That's what we're going to go ahead and do.
My bill, you know, the day before or something.
And I'm going to go over here to the building once we get done here, or I may scoot out a little early and see what drinks and candy and stuff like that. The boys.
There are the other sides, okay.
It's fine with it.
Okay.
Twenty-five dollar gift card.
Yeah, I don't think you have to vote on that, it's.
Yeah, that's really a committee kind of thing.
Yeah.
I mean, if we got committees, committees are, are the people that need to be discussing that in their committee meetings and, and then just reporting to the council, but, but since we don't have real active committees, so.
Okay.
So that's.
Yep, that's it.
Okay. Okay, uh, the cameras in the park, uh, at our last, at the work session, we, uh, talked about tabling at to the first of the year and I just need a vote, uh, a motion, I need a motion.
Motion to table it to the first of the year.
So we got a motion to table the camera in the park to the first of the year, go here a second. And all in favor, uh, aye? Okay, so that will be tabled to the first of the year. Uh, and then, uh, number B, uh, speed detection device update, um, I called Joey Dorson, I talked to him the other day. And he said he would consider putting it on the agenda to include College Avenue, West Main, East Main and Adamstown Road, uh, on their, um, speed ordinances. Uh, but he said it was only a consideration and that's it, it's not a promise to put it on, on the agenda, so. So, uh, under new business, we got the nuisance ordinance. Go ahead, I'll tie me in that.
Um, my concern was that, um, because we do live in a rural area, it's not, um, you know, a large town, um. I think our main purpose, and you guys tell me if I'm right or wrong, is that, um, our streets and homes look nice for people and neighbors coming through. And if you're the type of person who, you know, has a backyard, you know, your front yard looks just fine, but you've got stuff in your back yard that bothers your neighbor or someone, you know, that we have some type of, uh, ordinance or amendment to our ordinance where you can put up a fence or, you know, even a hedge or something to block that from view. And, um, also if you're, you know, you own ten acres, which is not uncommon around here, and, you know, out in your pasture, you've got whatever, but you can't see it from the street, you know, we're not going to come and punch you down because of that. You know, but if you do have something up there again, you would have a fence or a hedge or something just so that it's, it looks nice from the street or the road. Does that make sense? Unless it's an EPA issue, you know, with gas or oil or something going into the ground and then there's a whole new problem, but. I don't know, just my thoughts, what do y'all think?
We have a nuisance ordinance already on the books and there are certain items that I guess the state kind of deems as a nuisance, junk cars being the main one. And our current nuisance ordinance covers that already, and I think what you have is probably the amendments to the nuisance ordinance, but if you actually pull the code that we have, um, it talks about junk cars and things like that, um. So those sorts of things legally you can regulate where the people do and stuff like that, but the state can't like regulate, that's it. Um, as far as other items that you're talking about, racing or whatnot, like, I mean, junk cars, old tires, I think, or some things. All that sort of stuff is already covered.
Right.
But it depends on what else, I mean, I don't really know if state law allows cities to regulate other items that people may have in their front yard, I mean, like, just, I don't know, like somebody having some bicycles or something out there, I don't know. It's just sitting out there, I don't know really if you can make or remove it.
Jeff, I've got a question next, what determines a junk car?
It is defined.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, what, I mean, I've got one, I got one car that is one of one, that's worth thousands of dollars.
I think we have this.
I've got, yeah, I've got two, three more, it's real low mile, just because I haven't got two yet, what, what determines a junk car?
Let's see, uh, it is defined, um, I want to say it has to be in-aquable, has to be, uh, sat there for a period of time and things like that, um.
What determines a junk car? I ain't got no junk car. I mean, but I'm just being honest with you, if you got something, what determines a junk car?
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm saying, you know, here.
I'm very fortunate, I don't have just a little bit of land in seed limits and the rest of my land is the county, so I can move my stuff over to county and.
All right, y'all.
You know, and to say, what, what determines a junk car?
Here, here's how our definition, uh, in our code says, abandoned, discarded, wrecked, scrapped or junk motor vehicles, um, resting on private property, um, and there's some other things like abandoned furniture and building materials.
I ain't got that one yet.
Yeah, so that wouldn't be considered a junk car.
I got two thousand eighteen NASCAR chassis sitting there, I mean.
You know if they would take you.
I know, everybody gonna take my car, I ain't worried about that, I'm just saying, what determines a junk car?
Well, that was it.
That was it.
I ain't got a junk car.
So basically what I'm saying, there are certain items like junk cars and tires and building materials and old furniture and stuff like that, the state does deem to be a nuisance, you gotta regulate it. Outside of those sorts of things, I don't really know if y'all can have the power to tell somebody whether they can have it in the front yard or the backyard or if they put a fence up or not. Um, because I looked, you had asked me to look and I looked at other cities and it wasn't comprehensive research, but I couldn't really find any ordinance dealing with that sort of thing. I could only find it dealing with those items that I've just discussed, so.
I tell you what, I've got a concern about more than anything else is these clear, clearly these railroad tires, if y'all, maybe if y'all read the Frankland County citizen this past week, they had a runoff into a creek and had baked fish killed, EPA's all over them all there. And what it was, it was railroad tires that were going to burn for a few and the clips that run off in the creek and kill a bunch of stuff.
You're not supposed to burn him anyway.
They can burn them over there, so.
Yeah, they, I talked to the guy.
Next thing you know, you're going to have it running people's whales.
Debbie says that the railroad tires belong to the railroad, the railroad gave us permission to get rid of them.
Where do you put them?
The girl said they picked them up, put them in a trailer and then.
Well, unless.
Put them in a pile somewhere.
Then we need to contact that, that company, where they going to burn them, let's take them to them.
Oh, there's a company that'll burn them?
That's what I'm telling you, they were over there and they were wet and stuff and the stuff ran off the creek, am I right, someone out here? And it killed.
That's, that's the story that was in the paper anyway, they, they had a fire in their storage pile and they were spraying water on it and running the creek.
It ran off in the creek and killed a bunch of fish.
No, I didn't say we could burn them, I didn't say.
No, well, I have to say that, but we'll, we'll see if we can get in touch with that company and see if we can clean them up, will they take it and get it out of there?
Oh, okay.
It's, um, you know, maybe one company.
It's.
It's something over Frankham, they.
Yeah, it's a solid fuel, uh, power generation company that built over there, North Karnful up there.
Thank you.
It's all over the paper, see.
I think we need a letter from him stating that we can go on his property to take, or remove these, I mean, you look to see what, what I guess been dealing with, so I think we need a letter. Until we have something in writing.
Yeah. Oh, he, he told us to take them, just years ago.
What about the junk?
I'll call, I'll write a letter.
Yeah, no, no. No, because what are we going to do with them? I mean, we didn't, I mean, if we just pile them up somewhere.
That's what he just said.
You have to see if we, we'll have, we'll maybe see if they'll take them, they might not take them. Yeah, let's check that out first, I'll try and do that this week.
Well, I know with, I mean, uh, it's kind of disposing of that, of those, theirs, when he was changing out their tires, railroad tires. And I think Mr. Anderson knows a place, so if you can put the asset in your letter.
Sure.
Okay, and I'll try to get in touch with that cleaning up, that's all over the paper, I'll try to find, get in touch with them and see if they can see some way they'll take it.
But I mean, I mean, that's the only way we need to deal with it is if we got a place to put them, otherwise, we, we just pile them up out here somewhere, it's worse than they are scattered up down the track.
You think so? I think one pile of them would get them away from.
No, because then the first, I could concentrate it all in one area.
It's all over town now.
Well, I mean, that's, it's EPA issue, you don't want to get mixed up with EPA at all.
I know, I deal with them.
All right, moving on along, um, reached across America, what did we decide last week on that?
I made, we, last year, George, Mike can help me with this, Jordan was going to get them all these years and we were getting enough for all our veterans. Last year, we, we just, we bought the.
I think we got the, uh, one hundred and fifty, the ten.
Yeah, the ten of them and that's all we got was ten, so we, I think we had forty-one veteran lottery.
Well, I think that was our fault for not buying enough.
Well, if you buy all you need, you're going to need.
Well, before it seemed like we were making donations and. Well, before it seemed like we were making donations and getting whatever we needed.
Right, we had two hundred, we were donating two fifty at one time.
Yeah.
That's what we did.
That's what we did.
And to me, I think we need to donate two fifty and make sure everyone has a reason.
That's not enough.
It's still not enough.
No, they're fifteen dollars bees.
For.
So they've gone up.
Fifteen hundred dollars, you can get a hundred, for a hundred and fifty, you can get ten.
And that's what we got last year.
We got last year.
In the past, they were just taking donations and giving out how many, when you need.
Yes.
We had to check each term.
That's what I, what I suggest we do is let's buy three beautiful Christmas wreaths and let's hang them as you go into there and do that, instead that'd be a lot cheaper. And then, cause I'll tell you something, by the time you put those wreaths out and you go, you gotta, first thing you use, you gotta get, you gotta go around and find all the veterans, some of them are not in our, um, and, and we've done that, all of us have been doing that. For last year I filled them out because it wasn't too big. But, uh, let's, let's get a real, this is my opinion, let's get a real nice wreath and put at, at both entrances there. And then, what's the name, Calvary, Calvary, there's a veteran over there, let's get a nice wreath over there. And, and let's do that, it would save the town some money.
Just have a sign made in honor.
Yeah, yeah, put, put, uh, in, in wreath America or all, all our veterans, it'd be a lot cheaper on the top, I think. I mean, if y'all know something, I don't know anybody that makes wreaths, but I'm sure there's some, okay. And another thing you could do, I mean, I, of course, Donald's here to tell me, uh, you can get all our fish, one to use it every year. I mean, that's just my opinion.
Well, okay, we need to vote on that.
To drop the wreaths.
Need somebody to make a motion for that.
I'll make a motion, we drop the wreath Across America and we purchase three real nice wreaths.
Doesn't, doesn't when you donate, they give money to the?
Yeah, I think the money goes, it's same as that for me. I mean, you can still make donations, you know.
Danny, let's see if we can donate money, what you, you're purchasing wreaths and they're being, I don't, uh.
I mean, I just think it would save the town money and, and plus it would, that way I think you honoring all the veterans instead of just the ten that you stream. You know, and I'll tell you something, it's hard to walk up there and, and see all these veterans and I've got a, a bunch of them up there, my kind of, I mean, who do you give a wreath to? If we do it like this, it, it honors every one of them. And they deserve to be honored.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And then if you wanna make donations to the veterans, you can.
You can personally, right. So we, I'll make a motion that we do away with the Reese Across America and we purchase three real nice wreaths for our veterans in our city cemetery and use the Calvary cemetery. The Calvary cemetery, and I'll make a motion.
So we got a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Uh, I'll make, I'll make a second motion.
All in favor? Aye, okay. So that's what we'll do, at least this year, we will, uh, get three wreaths, put one at each entrance of the viral, the baddest, there's one. Is she okay? Okay, uh, so we can break out. Okay, uh, uh, that brings it down to the speakers.
We got new business.
Number three on new business.
My Elmeg, you got the wrong.
Well, she gave me one, but, she gave me, I love her.
You know, new business, come to sleep.
Elmeg, uh, I have not felt good this week and I haven't got up there to talk with David about Elmeg and we'll do that next week. We have been working on it. Sutton Road, um, David, why don't you put that one in?
I was asked by council members, it's been on since the day after the meeting.
I believe last week we discussed getting some bids on this.
Right. And we, we discussed that and, and we're going to move forward with getting bids.
Well, we were, um, at one of the meetings, we were, uh, accused of not doing anything to Sutton Road at all and I have a bill here for July thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, um, two loads of gravel and scrape the road.
How many have we done something last year? I mean, we did.
He's saying this, he's saying this year.
We didn't do anything, you should have asked you if we did.
But you gotta, I think you gotta do it like every six months to maintain the gravel.
Well, I have asked and I have been promised to get it scraped, but they just didn't show up and do it, so. Yeah, I noticed that our, uh, code enforcer has got a, a, a road scrape over in his yard. And he has called me and told me about that and, um, and it's an old one, I hadn't looked at it, I don't know what kind of good shape it's in, but he said it's good shape. And I can run a motor grader, but I ain't gonna run it for nothing. I tell you that right now.
January first. January first, yeah, but you can get paid. Can't get paid till then, but you can get paid January first. What, can Cody run them?
He never run them.
Oh, yeah, okay. But he does have them over, I don't know if this is, oh, but there is one over.
This is.
Oh, is it?
Uh, Cody's on his honeymoon right now.
Well, that's right, we did, he got married last week.
Okay, uh, Sutton Road, uh, Hiller River, Hiller River, what's that one?
Oh, we were discussing, you know, the, the part where you're going, uh, College over to.
East Main Street.
East Main Street was in such bad shape. We were discussing closing that, so it's in such bad shape and nobody's.
We talking about just, we talking about the little cut through.
Cut through.
Those that were getting there over there.
Yeah, and I found out the bus up there was coming anymore.
I don't want them, I don't think they.
The bus don't go that way no more.
So, uh, Doug, did you find out what we have to do?
Yeah, to, for a city to close a road, you have to get notice of property owners on the road, you have to actually have a, a finding that the road is, uh, basically not used anymore. You actually don't have to have a public hearing on it, like the county does or the state does when they close a road, cities don't have to do that, but I would recommend having a public hearing on that. Basically, you need to have some sort of, uh, I wouldn't say a study, but you need to have some sort of evidence either for people who live on the road that nobody uses. I don't, I've never been on this road, is there a resident that's on the road?
No, it was a cut up road. It was put up, you're probably two thousand, pick one, maybe three. It was put up years ago, it, it was put up as a cut up, cut up through, what it's always been.
Is it a, is it a house?
I think they have given it to us, they give it to us, I think the Hilliers give it to us back years ago. But it's, it's unpassable just about.
How many property owners?
You got, uh, Larry and Judy Burdette and Barry Cronin.
But none of those are residents on the road.
They own the property. They have property owners.
Pardon?
They don't have to live on it just that they.
No, it's not an access road, then none of their property.
Judy, Judy and Larry Burdette and Barry Cronin.
And Barry Cronin, he might have a gate going in.
He does have a gate going in, I mean, they, they could probably close it off and still use it.
Isn't he the person that can't get a welcome?
I can get hold of him.
Oh, okay then.
Uh, Judy and Larry said that would be fine, you know, inform them, so you have to get a formal statement.
All right, so Judy and Larry and Barry Cronin, is that it? That shouldn't be too hard to do.
Nah, I can do it, y'all want to move forward on that list, okay. What I'll do is I'll draft a, a notice that y'all are thinking about, give it to the, uh, the property owners. And then we'll go from there.
Okay, sounds good. All right. And that brings it down to our speakers.
All right. My first year. My first.
Yeah.
I just started off, I don't have a ton of the start of this, but there's been a lot of discussion in the house about the reimbursement. We're blessed to have, to have a county commissioner with us and I'm sure he's got the chair's number and Carol Partain, maybe we can suspend business for a minute and let him make a quick phone call and see where we're at with our reimbursement for the slots. And we won't be in suspension for weeks, cause this has been dragging on for air. So I'd like the council to ask to suspend the meeting for a minute, get the good commissioner to make a couple of phone calls and see where we're at. And we're blessed to have the horsepower here, so see where we're at tonight.
David, you had on your request to talk about public safety.
Well, that is about public safety, that money was spent for public safety, yeah.
Okay.
Jeff, go ahead. I think, my opinion on that, David, has been known to me a while. I think, I'll be personally, I hate answering the public call at night, even though I'm in public office, all you need is one to run him, I will get used to it. Well, I just gotta be honest, y'all, we didn't have a problem checking on, uh, Alicia Hayes that night at ten o'clock at night. Or eleven fifteen at night, so I don't think, I mean, he gets voted on, he's been involved in our business, I say compliment him, this has been dragging on for air. Call her, this is ridiculous.
He was calling that time when we had the speed bumps.
He called y'all at home.
Eight thirty at night.
Don't keep your heads in the sun, man.
No, I'm not keeping my head in the sun, I'm just saying, I think it would be best, so let's go, we've already voted on what we were gonna do on it.
All right.
And I think we need to wait till the next week and then we'll go from there. All right, well, let me move on, you start my clock, man. Uh, point of housekeeping.
I've already thirtyed your clock.
Well, I'll speed it up then, you. Point of housekeeping, I think y'all agreed to all the correspondence, had Debbie read it, it comes into city hall, that'd be great. And you would know about, there was a letter being sent, where we're at with radar, where we're at with reimbursement. Somebody says a thank you letter in here for something the city did, we did, this official correspondence, let Debbie read it in the record now. That way everybody's on the same page and there's no guessing. And I think y'all could do that tonight.
Yeah, run it by me, will ya?
Read all official correspondence from the past month that, that the next month's made, read it to the record.
Correspondence.
If you get a letter from Carol Partain that says this is what we waiting on, let her read that to the council, please. Uh, let me get on with it.
You ain't got the time to start.
The speeding is worse than it ever was, the trucks are back, it's out of control again. I wanna know what this council's gonna do about it tonight. I'm waiting on y'all's answer.
Well, David, we have, um, I have talked to Joey Dorsey and you heard me earlier, say that he was gonna put, that he was gonna consider putting that on the agenda.
I'll be honest with you, Joey Dorsey's word is enough, isn't it? Go ahead, council, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, council, we're talking about, uh, what we're gonna do about the speed bumps.
Y'all don't have to respond, but you can, go ahead.
Um, I would like to make a motion to put ste, speed tables in. And let them, you know, be a reasonable height so we can slow people down. I think that's fair asking, um, I'd like to make a motion on that, so we can at least.
It's not on the agenda.
Right.
No, it's.
It is on the agenda, it's public safety.
It's not on the agenda.
Public safety ain't on the agenda, not on the agenda. Speaker's not, I mean, speaker's on the agenda, but what the speaker speaks about is not on the agenda.
Isn't that act in the interest of public safety, they can't move forward with something to protect the public? We got the speed bumps pulled up that night at thirty minutes.
It's on the agenda.
It was not on the agenda to pull them up, but it was not, don't go there. I'm telling you right now.
Once the council voted to put.
Strong council, weak mayor.
That ain't the system we have, we have a strong mayor system.
Was any of the council members consulted about how the speed bumps were pulling up?
Once the council voted on that, the mayor had the discretion as the administrative person to do it.
He was supposed to at least let us all know, Doug, yes.
Point to it in the charter, point to it in the code.
It says in the charter, it, it does say in the charter.
Oh, it does, he has the, uh, the day to day runnings of the city run through the.
Can you read that to us, Doug?
It's in the charter.
No, don't you read it, I don't read it. We'll start, you go ahead.
No, you ain't dictating nothing to the mayor.
Doug, can we at least read the charter so it's not even that?
Oh, I don't have the charter.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not, if you wanna put it on the.
Okay, your time is up.
Thank you, dear.
Stop, stop.
All right.
We have an emergency meeting. Have an emergency meeting.
Okay, you're out of line.
Okay, thank you, dear.
I, I, I still wanna talk about this.
Well, you're out of line too, what do you wanna talk about?
No, I'm not, I'm not out of line.
We have.
I can take, I can take as long as I want.
It's not on the agenda, Kelly.
No, I can, we're talking about the speed. He had a, he had a question for us, so I, we're answering it.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So I made a motion.
You can't make a motion.
Okay, well, I would like to say something then. Earlier. Earlier this year, the town council voted unanimously to install four speed bumps on East Main Street between Highway fifty-one and College Avenue. This was done because it was the only way to control the speeders and the commercial truck of these on East Main Street. The speed bumps solved the problems completely. Shortly thereafter, they were, they were installed between, stalled, installed, people were not, shortly thereafter, they were installed. People who were not, I'm sorry, I must have, we worded it wrong, Bowersville reacted angrily over the installation. They, they simply did not like the fact the high speed shortcut to Highway fifty-one no longer able to be traveled above the posted speed limit. These people who were not citizens of Bowersville and had not ever, not never attended one Bowersville Town and Council meeting, showed up like, very upset at the next few council meetings. The people who were not citizens of Bowersville were led by the Hart County Commission Chairman Joey Dorsey, who immediately started to campaign and intimidate, intimidation to have the speed bumps taken up, calling the council members and threatening to cut all, all services off to the Bowersville that the county was providing. Commissioner Joey Dorsey was being a bully, who was, who has grown very accustomed to using his position of power to get what he wants. This led to one of the saddest days in our town's history. The town council caved into Commissioner Joey, Joey Dorsey and the angry, uh, people intimidation tactics and by the vote of three to one voted to pull the speed bumps up. Less than thirty minutes later, the county started removing the speed bumps. Somehow the county had everything planned and ready to go and started to remove them. Mayor Jim, Jim Jordan said he did, he had it done. We are all still waiting for the mayor Jordan to explain why he did not seek input and how to proceed with the town council before having them removed. He refuses to answer who he talked to with the county in order to have the city property destroyed within the town council approval. But these questions will probably have to be answered under a different meeting. As soon as the speed bumps removed from the traffic pattern, the, the traffic patterns and the speeds of the vehicle went back to exactly like they were before. They, the speed, the speeds are actually worse. And before the speed bumps were, than when the speed bumps were installed. A lot of people who lived outside the city and traveled down East Main Street are now purposely driving faster at a five. Therefore, I would like to discuss this even further and be able to put speed tables in that are reasonable height and, um, no later than December sixth of twenty nineteen. Also, while we're getting the bids that the contractors gave us, um, also, while we are getting the bids, have the contractors give us bids for them to be installed on West Main Street, College Avenue and Adamstown Road and Shirley Road. And devote to approve the timetable to have them installed and on these roads. The speed is out of control, if someone's gonna get hurt, it's worse now than ever.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, next speaker, Annette Neal. Okay, uh, next speaker, Annette Neil.
Can I get clarification if you all are doing executive session still?
I can't hear you.
Are you still, you're not doing executive session? Then I'll reserve my comments for future meeting.
Okay. Alright, go here, motion, the chair to me. Got a motion, take a second. I figure I'm in favor of the chair.
Hold on, wait a minute, wait a minute. Did it not go down? The speed detection device, uh, what you had suggested to the, uh, county, did we ever vote on what the actual roads were that we were gonna ask the county to do? I think we did a long time ago.
College Avenue, East Main Street.
Yeah, I think we did.
We did.
Well, I didn't see a vote, uh, you know, in the past, but. If it's been voted on, that's fine.
It has been, yeah, several months back. Yeah, it was a long time.
So, all in favor? The chair.
Who seconded it, I'm sorry.
Kelly.
Thank you.
Meeting's adjourned.